Good evening, and welcome to the Village of Westmont official voting board meeting for May 3rd, 2010. I'd like to ask our clerk to please take the roll call.
Mayor Ron?
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Emery?
Here.
Trustee Fleming?
Here.
Trustee Forsley?
Here.
Trustee Klebenow?
Here.
Trustee Scott?
Here.
Trustee Seneca?
Here.
Manager Searle?
Here.
Attorney Zemanek?
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern? He is outside, okay. Fire Chief Trout?
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Gunther?
Here.
Deputy Police Chief King?
Here.
Economic Development Director and Assistant Manager Kimball?
Here.
Finance Director Von Bagat?
Here.
Deputy Fire Chief Connolly?
Here.
Human Resource Administrator Casey? I got you.
She's going to leave out the rest of the people here this evening that are employed one way or another by the Village of Westmont. Thank you. Would you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda are the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting April 15th and board meeting April 19th, 2010.
Motion?
Motion.
Motion to approve, Seneca?
Second, Emery?
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Thank you. Reports. We have special recognition of members of our police and fire department, and because our fire department outnumbers our police department this evening, we're going to let our fire department go first. I'd like to call up Deputy Chief Connolly, who's going to make the presentation for Chief Trout, who's physically in the back of the room, but he shouldn't even be here because he's not feeling well. But he wanted to make sure that everything went well this evening, so he's here. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Mayor. And for those of you who know Chief Trout, he must be awfully sick to pass up a speaking opportunity.[162.59][162.59](Laughter). Pleased to be here tonight, and pleased that the police department gave us a first shot tonight. Real quickly, we're here to recognize both the police officers, fire department personnel, EMA personnel, and a citizen who assisted in a very difficult and eventually tragic incident that resulted in the death of a female and the survival of the male driver of a car that went into pond at 63rd and Richmond. Chief Mulhern is going to discuss the efforts, the valiant efforts of the police officer, Officer Muska, and our civilian, so I will defer that to Police Chief Mulhern. Quickly on the incident, for those who aren't familiar with it, as it turned out, the incident is almost directly across the street from my house. I responded initially and was the first fire department personnel on the scene, became the incident commander, noticed that the male victim had already been pulled out of the water that had been accomplished by Officer Muska with the assistance of the driver who's here tonight. I checked that victim, found that victim was alive, breathing, having a very difficult time, relayed to me that his wife was still in the water, was able to ascertain that Officer Muska was in the water, encouraged her to get out of the water for her safety. The water temperature was approximately 40 degrees that evening. Right after my arrival, our headquarters companies, which consist of an engine, truck, and ambulance, all arrived on the scene. Our paramedics began administering advanced life support immediately to the male victim who was on the ground. At that time firefighter Brendan Sullivan, age 20, and firefighter paramedic Michael Dudley, age 34, had already donned special water rescue gear while they were en route and swam to the area where the car had been submerged. This is approximately just slightly less than 100 feet offshore. They noticed debris and a smell of gasoline on the water surface, and based on their training, started a water search pattern. Within a minute or two firefighter Sullivan noticed something floating in the water. He reached out, realized it was the female's hair, hair of the female victim, and was able to retrieve the victim, turn her face up, and hold on to her while shore personnel pulled him back to shore. Firefighters and paramedics then administered advanced life support and transported her to the hospital. The husband had also been transported eventually along with Officer Muska, who was treated and transported for exposure. This call required many personnel. There were more than 16 of our personnel on the scene in approximately less than eight minutes, many of those much quicker. Additionally, required mutual aid for dive rescue teams from the Oak Brook Fire Department, Lyle Woodridge, Lamont, and Mabus Division 10. As I said earlier, we are also assisted by the Westmont Emergency Management Personnel who assisted with our communication vehicle and traffic control, as well as lighting operations. Westmont Rescue Swimmers Dudley, Brendan Sullivan, and Kevin Hensinski then continued their search for potential victims. Eventually, the scuba divers, rescue divers entered the water and searched the submerged vehicle. We didn't believe there were more victims, we could not take that chance. They determined there were no additional victims. It was during that search operation that one of the divers' masks was partially dislodged while he was underwater. Based on their training, he was able to surface and safely exit the water. After that, divers re-entered the water, or additional divers entered the water, they were able to continue the search, and they also dove again to attach a cable from the tow truck to the submerged vehicle, recognizing that it was all performed at night and essentially zero visibility and zero visibility water. On behalf of Chief Trout and the Westmont Fire Department, I'd like to commend all those involved in this multi-agency unified command rescue effort, and I'm very proud of the efforts and professionalism shown by police and fire personnel. Unfortunately firefighter Dudley is working his other job tonight, so he can't be with us to receive a plaque, but I'd like to ask Brendan Sullivan to come up, and if the mayor would be so kind as to present the plaque to him. If I could read the plaque, it says, "In recognition of lifesaving efforts on the night of March 29th, 2010, as a team entered a pond in which the vehicle was submerged in attempt to rescue occupants, they located one victim and transferred her to shoreline, where waiting paramedics performed advanced life support. Awarded this day, third day of May, 2010, William Ron, Mayor."
Thank you, Mayor. And I also like to echo Deputy Chief Connolly's comments. This was a multi-agency response, both the police department, at least I was very proud I was out there that night to see the interactions between our police department and our firefighters. It was a fantastic operation. Unfortunately, the outcome was not something that we anticipated, but the operations was seamless, and I, again, want to echo the thanks of our officers for the help from the Westmont Fire Department. At this time, I'd like to have Mr. Christopher Hyde, Officer Jennifer Muska, and Officer Scott Olpelt join me here at the podium. As Deputy Chief Connolly mentioned, on March 29th, at approximately 9:40 PM, the Westmont Police and Fire Departments were dispatched to report of a car in the pond in the northwest corner of 63rd Street and Richmond Avenue. The pond was completely submerged underwater. Mr. Christopher Hyde was driving past upon when he noticed the lights from a vehicle under the water. He doubled back and then checked and saw that there was people in the water struggling and dialed 911 to report the incident to the Westmont Police Department. Members of the Westmont Police Department and Fire Department immediately began their response. Patrol Officer Jennifer Muska responded to the call and was first upon the scene. Upon her arrival, she observed Mr. Hurlbert, I'm sorry, a 67-year-old male approximately 15 feet from shore, and he was struggling in the water, and his face was blue. We later learned that the water temperature at that time was approximately 44 degrees, and the air temperature was just barely above freezing. Officer Jennifer Muska announced over the radio that she was going to enter the water and to assist the male to shore. She removed her duty belt and bullet-resistant vest and secured them in her vehicle and then entered the water. It should be noted at this point that this is a retention pond, and at the time was approximately 12 to 16 feet deep. The water is very dirty and murky. The bottom of the pond is soft, and if a person tried to stand up, they would begin to sink and they would possibly be pulled underwater. The bottom was described by one fire department official to be similar to that of quicksand. Officer Muska reached off of Mr. Hurlbert and was able to assist him to shore. Officer Muska needed the assistance of Mr. Hyde in getting Mr. Hurlbert onto land because of the soil condition as she was standing in the muck and beginning to be sucked under, and also the condition with the water, the land was higher than the level of the water. There was like a little cliff that she needed to get Mr. Hurlbert out of the water. Mr. Hyde assisted her with that effort. Officer Muska learned from Mr. Hurlbert that his wife was also in the vehicle. Our investigation later revealed that the vehicle was approximately 60 feet from shore. Officer Muska observed something floating in the water and believed it to be Mrs. Hurlbert. Officer Muska re-entered the water and began swimming to Mrs. Hurlbert. However, due to the murky water conditions and the water temperature, Officer Muska was unable to swim all the way out to Mrs. Hurlbert. She was being affected by the early stages of hypothermia and made the decision it was better to return to shore. Officer Scott Olpelt, who responded with members of the Westmont Police and Fire Department, assisted Officer Muska to shore by throwing her a water throw rescue rope and helped pull her to shore. At the same time, members of the Westmont Fire Department arrived and entered the water and brought Mrs. Hurlbert to shore. Officer Muska was later transported to the hospital as a precaution. However, she returned to the scene after changing uniform approximately one to two hours later. I was there when I spoke to Officer Muska, and after she was okay, after she was okay, and she said she was, I asked if she wanted to go home or if she wanted to go back to duty, and she said she wanted to finish out her shift. She got her duty gear and returned to patrol approximately three hours after this incident and finished her shift out until 6 o'clock that morning. Mr. Hurlbert was transported to the hospital, admitted for treatment, and released approximately one to two days later. Sergeant Patricia Smallwood nominated Officer Jennifer Muska to receive the department's lifesaving award. The department's award committee has reviewed Sergeant Smallwood's nomination and recommend that Officer Muska receive the department's lifesaving award and Officer Scott Olpelt receive a chief's recognition commendation for their actions that evening. I also nominated Mr. Christopher Hyde to Mayor Ron to receive a Mayor's Appreciation Award, which the mayor is going to award this evening. I would also like to recognize the efforts of telecommunicators Kim Sella and Blair Thomas, along with Officers Malamas, Bakovic, Settlemeyer, and Bogart, who were on duty that night and assisted during this incident. I am honored to be able here tonight to award the Westmont Police Department's lifesaving award to Officer Jennifer Muska for her actions that evening, and a chief's recognition commendation to Officer Scott Olpelt for assisting Officer Muska. Officer Muska, without thought for her own safety, entered the water to assist Mr. Hurlbert to shore and save his life, and then attempted to reach Mrs. Hurlbert. Her actions serve as an example to all of us in public safety. I wish to publicly thank and commend her for her service to the Westmont Police Department and to the residents that we serve. So at this time, I would like to issue to Officer Muska the department's lifesaving award. This is awarded to Patrol Officer Jennifer Muska for the saving of a human life dated May 3rd, 2010, and also attached is a pin which she will proudly wear on her uniform from this day forward. Jennifer, congratulations.
We're so lucky to have you.
At this time, I'd also like to recognize, issue a chief's recognition commendation in recognition of Patrol Officer Scott Olpelt for assisting Patrol Officer Jennifer Muska back to shore during a water rescue of two elderly persons after their car went into a pond for superior performance and circumstances as recognized by the chief of police. Mayor Ron, if you could assist me here. At this time, I will read the Citizens Recognition Award, which Mayor Ron will be issuing to Mr. Christopher Hyde. With sincere appreciation for your insouffice actions in rendering assistance to the Village of Westmont's Police and Fire Departments during water rescue efforts under adverse conditions on March 29th, 2010, Christopher Hyde has presented the certificate of appreciation from the mayor and Board of Trustees on this third day of May, 2010. Mr. Hyde, thank you.
And the effort to be very brief, I would also like to recognize some members of Officer
Muska's family who was in the audience. Her mother Debbie is here, her grandparents are also present, and her son Anthony is present to witness her and congratulate her on her outstanding efforts. One last thing which I would like to present, Jennifer Muska, if you can come back, please. On behalf of the Westmont Fire, I'm sorry, the Westmont Citizens Police Academy, they went through all the newspaper articles, went online, and included here as a scrapbook with all of your press, so you can have that as a remembrance as well. This you don't get, but for those of us who have come to our police department training center, we have a wall of past historical photos of the police department, as well as actions taken by our officers. I am very, very proud that tomorrow morning I will be handing this. It's a copy of a newspaper article with the firefighter and Officer Muska during their press conference, which is held the police department. A newspaper article stating cop firefighter is rescued too from pond. That will be probably going up in our training center tomorrow. And with that, I would just like again to thank Officer Muska, Officer Olpelt, all the members of the Westmont Police Department and Fire Departments who responded to this incident. They make us proud, and during the press conference, they mentioned that they are not heroes, that their actions were not heroic action, they were just doing what they should normally do. And I believe Officer Muska said that she reacted from instinct, and the firefighters also said that it's just, I'm not a hero, I'm just doing something that I do every day, and I think they're to be commended and honored for all their actions and how they keep us safe every day and every night of our lives. Thank you. With that being said, I'd like to invite everybody in the board in the overflow room. We have cake and coffee, compliments of the Westmont Fire and Police Academy Alumni Associations, to say thank you as well. So thank you for coming.
No?
No, you have work to do.
Thank you, Tom.
We do have the best firearm place.
Yeah. Thank you.
Just like, oh, I don't want to get involved.
Just the epitome of the profession.
Yes, very much so.
Just another example of what a wonderful police and fire department we have on duty to serve our community 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. And also to have a resident to go and perform heroic efforts like that is absolutely wonderful. It was a great presentation. I don't think you can honor people like this enough for their heroic actions. That's all that I have. Moving right along, our village clerk.
I just have a couple of announcements. On Saturday, May 8th, this coming Saturday, the post office will hold their annual food drive, and so everybody knows, any food you put out there will stay in Westmont, it'll go to the Westmont Alliance Church and the People's Resource Center, so food they pick up. And secondly, Public Works, the Public Works Committee will hold a meeting on Tuesday, May 11th, at 7:00 PM. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Our village attorney, John Zemanek.
I've got nothing tonight. Thank you.
Village manager Ron Searle.
Thank you. Just a couple of pieces of information I want to point out to the board. Last Thursday, there was some discussion about the permit parking for commuters, and what I passed out this evening is a table that was put together by Deputy Clerk Penzac that shows you a breakout by lot, the spaces available, permits sold, the number oversold, the percent oversold, and then in the far right-hand column, he's got a column labeled additional oversell percentage. I asked him if, based on his knowledge, what would he suggest if we wanted to increase that oversell, and there's a 15% that he's recommending for Lot B. I know we're going to be postponing the downtown business discussion until the next meeting. I just wanted to draw attention by passing this information out to you this evening so you can have a chance to look at that. The other piece of information was a couple of board members asked me about a breakout on the cost savings for the consolidation of the village board meetings, and I passed out a document that our finance department put together on that. And what it shows on the left-hand side is what our current costs are per meeting and what historically we had budgeted. The costs are broken out into the board costs, our IT costs, and our legal costs, and I think those are actually three separate budget areas in the budget, so you wouldn't find that number in just one line item. On the right-hand side is what the proposal was based on the board discussion, which was to cut the number of meetings to 24 with the possibility of some additional meetings to kind of provide as a buffer there. So that information is for the board's consideration. And the last thing I had was a request for executive session to discuss personnel and pending litigation following the regular meeting.
Thank you. Moving right along. First item, 2010 Taste of Westmont Public Street Closure Plan. Board to consider an ordinance approving a Westmont Special Events Corporation Traffic Management Plan for the 2010 Taste of Westmont, July 8th, 9th, 10th, and 11th, always the weekend after the 4th of July. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Just, I get to the page.
That's what I'm looking for.
Okay. And the rides, I'm not certain, is that, this is just for the streets, or is this the whole thing for the?
This is just the street closure?
This is the street closure? Okay. Because we were talking about the rides and stuff. Okay.
There is a provision, it was brought up on Thursday night about if the Methodist Church parking lot is not suitable after it gets started and operational, that it would be, or can be relocated to the Burlington Avenue lot. That is in section, I believe, three, or two or three of the ordinance.
What about the extra ride, I think it's the slide on Irving, because I know I thought Irving was going to stay open, I think the police thought Irving was going to stay open past the alley, that only the Methodist parking lot was going to be used for rides.
And I think that's, from my understanding, what we-
And I think that they've told me that they have room on Cass Avenue for it, so it doesn't need to be on Irving.
The slide?
I would say as long as you guys are fine with it, but if it's going to put a monkey wrench in your plans, then I'd say no.
Well, I guess, my question is, why wouldn't the Methodist lot work out, and why would you want consideration to move the ride?
If it's too loud, if we get complaints, that's what, remember we said if we have to shut it down?
Well, that's not the way it really sounds in there. If the lot's not conducive or whatever, that's the way it sounds to me that can move the ride. So it's only if there's-
That was my understanding.
-a problem.
Well, they can't move it to the other, once they set up the equipment, it's a matter of just shutting it down and they can't use it. I mean, to me, it sounds like if they set up and it doesn't work, they'll move it to the other lot.
Right, that's-
That's the way it sounds to me, because, you know, they're not talking about, once you, if it's too noisy, you shut it down, it's stuck there. They can't move it. They're not going to go moving during the middle of the night and moving it over to another parking lot.
I guess the question is, if the lot at Cass and Burlington wasn't big enough for it to begin with, and you need the lot at Methodist, even if it is shut down due to noise in that, how can you move?
Okay, I thought the reason, I didn't think that it was the size of the ride, I thought it was that they were trying to leave that lot open.
Size of the ride.
Yeah, they said the-
Size of the ride.
The mediums that are separating, the parking stalls are in the way for that one ride to be in that parking lot, that's why they have to use a totally open parking lot.
Okay, gotcha.
But I think there's, are there two rides in that parking lot now? So instead of one, there are two rides in there, which I think was a concern that people were told there was only going to be one, but if they move the slide, then we're still cutting it down to at least two then, instead of three being in that area. And I think the, even though the slide was going to be moved over so emergency vehicles could get through, I still think it's probably a good idea to keep it out. But I don't know, once they set up, that's there, it's either shut down.
And the second beer tent that we said if that doesn't work out, it gets shut down, is it in the, is it in there as to who makes that determination? Because I think we said it was going to be the police chief, wasn't it?
Yep.
Bob, did you want to add anything further?
Can I approach?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, we'll let you.
With the board's approval?
Yes, of course.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, everyone. Yeah, we have two rides in the Methodist parking lots, and you're right, the one ride is physically too big to be put in the Burlington and Cass lot, it's the cliffhanger, and the islands in that lot will cause it, you can't set it up there. So if, you know, if it is too loud during evening hours, we can definitely tone down the music of those rides, I know they all have music. You know, we can tone them down, we can turn them off, we can probably even tone down the lights if we have to, if that's too annoying as well.
Can't tone down those kids from screaming though.
You can't tone down, or the noise of the machine, it makes its own natural sound too, so you can't do that as well. You know, and the slide we're okay moving to, I know that was a last-minute change, and it's easy, and worst-case scenario, I can push it farther down Cass and kind of go over Irving and squish things up a little bit more.
You personally pushing it up?
I will personally get up there and push, yes, exactly, so I have no problem with that, so.
Is, do you think two rides in that area?
Thank you, that, I appreciate that.
Any other questions?
What's the second ride that's going to go into the parking?
Bumper cars, I believe.
Okay.
The little kids though.
Yeah, I think that was, that's another one that's a big, but it'll fit in the Burlington and Cass, it has in the past, it's just-
Okay. And they don't scream too much in the bumper cars?
No. And it's semi-enclosed, I think, it's got a roof over it and stuff, so sides are open, but.
Okay. Any other question?
Just, was the chief, Mulhern, were you where, we just threw out your name just now. Did you hear it next door?
No, sir.
For the determination of the second beer tent, you have so, you know, if you think, hey, we got to close it, everybody's in agreement that you're the man to make the call.
Well, as I said, we've, my staff and I have come up with some conditions, which we will, I'll work with the manager's office as well as to, so everyone's aware ahead of time. Again, so we have some type of ground rules or some type of understanding, rather than that night coming to any disagreements or any problems that night. So we've already started working on that, I will quote it to the manager and-
And you're the final word on it.
Yeah, because if it gets rowdy, we don't want to wait for a decision by committee, it's your call.
I understand, I understand.
Usually you have to get the wristband, don't you, before you get liquor?
We're not doing wristbands this year because the amount of time it would take to wristband everyone is just, it was very, it was very different.
So they're going to try to be checking IDs as they-
Stamps.
Okay, so, I mean, but you're going to have some ID'd.
Exactly, we'll have a table set up like we do in the past-
Like we used to do.
-where people are checking IDs and doing stamps.
Will that table be set up at that second tent, or do they have to go to the first tent?
Yes, we'll have, the plan is that table's at both tents.
Okay, so they don't have to go back to the first tent to get the stamp and then come back?
Absolutely, they have to.
But there will be a way of monitoring that they've been checked for age?
Exactly, and we may, we're thinking about maybe different stamps for different days and different, even the different tents.
Okay, and did I understand from my public information meeting that you might be also serving soda at that second tent?
We're considering doing maybe pop and water too as well, you know. It may be another tent attached, that tent next to it, you know, during that timeframe as well. So it won't be just the beer.
Thank you.
All set?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have a motion and a second for the discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Clebeneau.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Next item, downtown employee parking permits. Board to consider motion to postpone any formal action regarding the downtown employee parking permit program until May 13th. Committee, the whole meeting.
Motion postponed, Forsley.
Second, Emery.
Discussion, roll call.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Clebeneau.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Proclamation, board to consider motion approving a proclamation honoring Westmont's Public Works and declaring the week of May 16th, 2010 as National Public Works Week.
So moved, Emery.
Second, Forsley.
Discussion, roll call.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Clebeneau.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
What'd you read? Didn't I read the second, the second one? I'll go back.
Okay, we'll make number five there and number four here.
Okay. Second proclamation, board to consider motion approving a proclamation declaring the week of May 9th to the 15th as National Police Week in Westmont. Saturday and Saturday, May 15th, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in Westmont.
Motion to approve, Seneca.
Second, Emery.
Discussion, roll call.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Clebeneau.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Intergovernmental agreement, board to consider an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with DuPage County for the transfer of property and maintenance responsibility for drainage system components.
Motion approved, Scott.
Second, Emery.
Discussion, roll call.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Clebeneau.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Next item, construction on state highway. Board to consider resolution for construction on state maintained highways.
Motion to approve.
Second, Scott.
Discussion, roll call.
Trustee Clebeneau.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Declaration of village property as surplus. Board to consider an ordinance declaring certain vehicles formerly in village service as village, surplus village property. These items to be disposed of at an auction administered by the DuPage Mayor's and Manager's Conference on June 12th, 2010.
Motion to approve, Seneca.
Second, Forsley.
Discussion, roll call.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Clebeneau.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Fiscal year 2010, 2011 budget. Board to consider approval of a resolution approving the fiscal year 2010, 2011 budget.
So moved, Emery.
Second, Fleming.
Any comments that the board wishes to make on this particular item?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you to staff.
If so, please do.
The thank yous to everybody involved, the village manager, yourself, the board, the staff, Lisa, the kudos can't be enough. And the staff for all they've given up, and the residents are the benefactor.
Well said, thank you.
Anyone else?
Glad it's over.
Yeah, that's what I said.
The only thing that, I want to compliment everyone on the work they did. The only thing that I would like to say at this point is, I am not in favor of cutting the meetings back in half. I think the meeting schedule should be left the same, let it continue to go. If we can combine the meetings, that's fine, but I just foresee times when we may get caught in a situation where if we think we have long nights now, there may be some nights that may be considerably longer than what everyone's accustomed to. And I mean, I understand the amount of money we're talking about here, but in the grand scheme of things, I think that we should leave our meeting schedule and that whole part of this budget just the way they were presently.
I agree, I think when there's a light night, we can take, as we had started with staff's recommendation to combine, but we have the privilege and the luxury right now of hashing something out and then thinking about it, and if we need to, readdressing it on Monday. And if we lose that, we might put ourselves in situations where we want to revisit it and it wastes time and all that. So I think for many different reasons, although it takes more days, it is actually a more expedient process.
I'd like to see us leave it the way it is and at least try it, we can always revisit it. Part of the reason we put additional funding on senior citizen, DuPage Council senior citizens was because of this sacrifice that the board is making. I think, I know, speaking for myself, I felt that it was also a statement to our staff and to our employees, who have now for the second year in a row, not had a wage increase, but in fact have had a cut with furlough days. I'd like to see us at least try it, other towns have done it successfully for a number of years. I would just like to see us try it, we can always go back, we can always go back, but I'd like to see us at least try it.
I don't mind trying it, but I'd rather have the money in the budget, knowing it's there, and then come back at the end of the year saying, look, we saved whether it's 17,000 or whether it's 10,000. I'd rather have the money there than to sit there and go over budget because it wasn't budgeted. So we're still going to try, we're going to do as many combined as we can, that we have many meetings, that we could do the combination. But I'm still not comfortable with it, and it does give us two weeks to decide on certain things, but at certain points, we'll have to have three weeks, because, you know, there will be several months that we have a third Monday of the month, and that pushes things off for three weeks. And I know, Ron, you said that, well, we would call a special meeting, well, I don't feel comfortable saying, I want to call a special meeting. I would feel more comfortable saying, we don't have to have this meeting, and we can save the money. I don't like the idea of how many special meetings we may have to call, I'd rather see that it's budgeted there, and hopefully we can save and cut as many as we can. And the more we try it, the more we'll see how it happens. Actually, this is more of a burden on staff than it is on any of us. Our burden is to show up, to prepare for a meeting and show up and think about it and talk to the residents. Staff is the one who has to try to get everything on the agenda, and ever since we brought it up, there hasn't been one meeting that something didn't have to get put on the agenda. And until staff is comfortable, and, you know, if they can combine the meeting, that's going to be great, but I'm not comfortable with it at all. And I don't think the savings was that drastic to, you know, I'd rather see the money's there, and then, like I said, hopefully we can sit there and be proud and say, hey, you know, we managed to combine six meetings this year and we saved X amount of dollars. And if we did it that, this year, then maybe next year we'll even be more comfortable. We did it once, and once is not a good test, and once did not-
And that's why I would really like to see us try this, I'd also like to understand how other communities do it so successfully. What makes us so different that we can't make it work? Ginny had mentioned that most of the clerks, that, well, you could probably pick up on it better than I could, but fewer, you know, towns do four meetings a month than do two.
Yeah, and a lot of it gets, if I understood right, talking with the attorney and staff, a lot of it gets postponed. A lot of things do get pushed off and postponed because they don't have all the information there, they don't know that somebody asked for more information at a meeting, and is that what we want to put, especially with we, when we've got new company coming, Walgreens trying to come in and build, and hopefully someday soon, hopefully Lowe's or somebody will come into that property, and I would hate for them to sit there and go, well, I'm sorry, we have to wait three me, or we have to call a special meeting.
I still feel firmly that we should at least try it, although certainly-
I'm just saying we're not going to try.
You know, yes for the budget, but I want to go on record as saying, you know, $18,000 savings is considerable.
And like you said, we've already ticketed money for the senior citizen council from that.
Well, I don't, I don't-
We could give them another $7,000, would you let me finish?
Go ahead.
Please. That's when we said we could do that, so.
Well, we saved money out of the Westmont Chamber, thank to them too, that we can do that.
Well, yes, thanks to them.
And I think what we need to do is leave this in the budget, we cut it where we can cut it. If we can combine the meetings, we combine the meetings. The biggest problem that I have is, and one of the biggest problems I've had with government all along is, well, let's postpone it, let's push it back, let's push it back, which is what we're talking about doing, which is doing a disservice to our residents. If we can hash it out-
I say let's try it and see how much of a disservice it is, if any. As I said, you know, other communities have done it so successfully, $18,000 is a lot of money, especially in this budget year.
Well, trust me, I know $18,000 is a lot of money.
And it might get even worse next year.
I'm well aware of the amount, thank you.
So I think we should just continue to at least try it.
Then I ask that we have a separate vote on leaving this in the budget versus leaving it out?
It's fine, if we can do that.
I had talked to Ron a couple of weeks ago, and he has, he mentioned a process that we could start where it allows the opportunity to review information before we have to-
What I was going to suggest is that, at the next set of meetings, we'll have a formal set of rules and a proposal on how we can do it, and the board could vote at that time if you think it's something that could work. I know we could do it on a trial basis, see, you know, if it's something you're comfortable with. You know, that was going to be my suggestion.
Can I ask a question? And I appreciate the mayor giving up his, half of his salary, and the clerk giving up half hers, and us giving up half ours, okay? But the object is, is what is it going to cost us legal fees if we change the ordinance? And then find out we have to change it back, or are we not going to change the ordinance?
Well, I would suggest that we do not change it, try it out for six months, see if you're comfortable with it. John, I talked a little bit about this on Thursday, I think you were comfortable with the idea of a trial period without actually changing the ordinance? So we wouldn't expend any legal fees in that regard, until you were comfortable with it.
I guess I feel comfortable where we would, if we don't need the meeting, we just don't do it.
And Bob, just so that, I agree with you, but just so that the listening public is clear, it's the board who gives up half of their hourly wage. The clerk and the mayor are on salary or stipend, theirs is not affected by the number of meetings.
They get their full pay through the whole year.
Yes. That's why you see on the sheet, it says board cost 600, that's the six of us.
So we're saying-
I thought we were talking about as a board, all of us. Now we've got apples and oranges.
It's the sixth trustee.
I wasn't aware of that, I thought you guys-
I wasn't aware of it either till finance director-
Can we, I mean, is there any way that could be modified?
Just because I don't want, if we decide to do this, I don't want a resident coming back and accusing the mayor and Ginny of not being truthful, or, you know, saying they wouldn't give it up or something.
Right.
They are on a different structure, they can't do it by-
And I don't think we were under the impression that that's what it was.
Okay, so I-
At least I was.
I know I wasn't, I thought that they were not going to be paid because they weren't here, just like us.
Can I ask you then, do they, do they get paid for meetings even if they don't show up? Are they on a fixed 8,000 and 6,000?
Yes, yes, they are, and actually, because they have duties, well, as all of you do, but you are paid on meeting attendance, they are actually paid, considered a salary or a stipend for the duties that they work. So it's not in the same pay structure, and that is part of the process, it's written in how they're elected, and it cannot be changed during the term.
It could be changed for future terms, though.
It could be changed for future terms, but not midterm.
During a term.
Correct.
Because of the nature of their jobs, so I, you know, I don't want anybody at home thinking this was their idea if somebody sees that it, theirs isn't halved, it's not their idea, they have to get that pay.
So basically, we're talking three areas, the board, which is the six of us.
Yes.
The videoing, and legal fees.
Yes.
Which I thought the legal fees were going to be a lot higher, I am absolutely stunned. Thank you, John.
What a deal, John, what a deal.
You're hourly, and I thought, so when we're stuck in there until midnight, I thought the time clock was going, I did not realize that you-
It is, it is. This is just an estimate based on the Monday night voting meetings alone.
Which are like 15 minutes usually.
Sometimes we're in and out of here in no time whatsoever, sometimes they last longer. But on average, if you figure travel meeting attendance, getting back, that's about it. There is some work between the Thursday night meeting and the Monday night meeting with agenda preparation, tweaking the ordinances, et cetera.
Oh, I figured out, in your office, it's one thing, I just was thinking of sitting here, I didn't know if it was a fixed fee or-
No, but I think that's pretty accurate.
What, that's what, a two-hour, one-hour, two-hour?
Little over two-hour.
Little over two-hours, what you're estimating an average of a meeting. So, I really thought the legal fees were not even included in this then.
I think, well-
Talk fast, Patty's on the clock.
Yeah. Okay, whatever you mean.
No.
Not too much, just fast.
I would, I'm still for keeping this on, and I'd rather see us try to save and see how good we can cut the meetings and cut the amount down, if we can add them, that's fine. But I think it's, we're, I don't like the idea of going over budget. So I'd rather be, have it budgeted, and then come back and say, look, we saved, you know, maybe the same amount, we'll see, and then once we've had the trial practice on it, and we'll see if it'll work out.
We've got trustee Fleming's request to consider, and would you care to, how should we, how should we handle it?
There should be a separate motion by trustee Fleming, just as to that item, there should be a vote on that, and then depending on how that vote goes, there'll be a vote on the, on the budget, which we already have a motion and a second for, and may need to amend, may not need to, depending on how the first vote turns out.
I'm glad I make a motion to vote on the board meeting expenses as a separate item to leave it within the budget.
Second, Scott.
Okay. Any discussion, any more discussion?
I just want to understand what we're voting on then. This is just stay in the budget, but if, so if we vote.
You'd restore it to the full budget amount, I think is what your intent is.
The full budget amount, however, we would, whenever possible, go to one meeting?
Yep.
Is that what we're saying?
Cut it where we can cut it, but leave the full amount in just in case as a, as a fallback situation. Because trust me, if we can cut it back to one meeting, I'm all for it. But I don't want to get caught in a situation where we end up expending money that's not there.
Yeah, because if we call special meeting, there's going to be money that's not budgeted that has to be paid out.
We don't get paid for special meetings.
We don't get paid for special meetings, but other people do.
John does, video does.
We don't get paid for special meetings.
Yeah, but we don't get paid.
I understand it.
And, and the mayor and Ginny don't get paid. So if we called a special meeting, the only cost, or not only, because it's still a big expenditure, would be video and legal and any staff time.
I thought you guys get paid for special meetings.
No.
No, none of us get paid for special meetings right now, we waive it.
I was gonna check.
No, that was something, that was something that we decided two or three years ago not to do. We already gave that up.
So really, the whole conversation here is more of a mindset.
Yep.
Do you want to keep it as is, but try to do the one meeting?
Right.
Or do you want to go to the one meeting and if need be, go to two? It just becomes a matter of a mindset.
Well, except the budget, the budget is, for the new year, it's cut down and it's, should we, you know, it's two things. One, like you said, the mindset, and the other is, where do we put the figures? Do we put it as it exists today and if we can cut it down, great? Or do we put it at the lower amount and hope for the best?
We're gonna try it for six months, you'd have to leave more, more money in there to pay. If, if the decision is made, you go back to two meetings. And that's what we're talking about doing. So in terms of the money, it would, it would have to remain there until, when, until the six months are up. Is that correct or not?
No, that's not the way this was laid out.
I think the proposal was to restore the full budget amount and then if you decide to change it, then we would be that much better in terms of the budget, but we wouldn't actually change the budget. I think that's what trustee Fleming is.
Right, all I'm saying is just leave.
If, if you adopt the budget as written and decide after six months to go back to the full slate of meetings.
We don't have a budgeted.
You don't have the money.
There's no money.
We'll be over budget in that line.
And you'd be over budget.
Right.
And I'd rather say we've saved money and have the money budgeted than, than the opposite and come back and, you know, hear, well, we can't do it or we don't have the money to do it.
Any other questions or comments on his question? Hearing, hearing no more, vote on trustee Fleming's question.
Amendment.
Amendment.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
No.
Okay, now, on the original motion, we have a motion and a second.
So this would be approving the budget as amended in light of the motion that just passed.
Now, the question I have is, we're approving this budget, but the numbers are now different.
I think staff's gonna have to correct it and.
Make those corrections, yeah, we've done that before.
Okay. And the amount that would be added back in is seventeen thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars. So that would be added back in.
Into the.
Correct, into the expenses.
What about, as the mayor suggested, if we do it for six months, so do we only have to budget half of it back in?
Well, it depends on where your six months would be because we had May and June already taken out because this wasn't effective till July 1st either, so we would essentially have four months we'd be putting back in, so.
That's true.
You need a vote, any other questions? Roll call on the original motion.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
I'd just like to make one more, one more comment on, in terms of the budget. As is, was well demonstrated this evening, we don't always all agree on the items in front of us. So we've complimented staff on everything that they've done and our staff in working to cut the budget. But I have to also say that when this board discusses items, whether it be here or whether it be an executive session, we don't always agree, but we discuss the item and we come to an agreement and we move ahead. And it hasn't, not always been that way with this board. And the point I'm trying to make is that we all work very cooperatively and respect each other as a board in reaching the total goals as we've set for our village of Westmont.
And more than once, we've been referred to as a cookie cutter board. I don't think so.
Exactly.
If other boards could just follow our lead.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that would be nice if they could.
Thank you. Next item, celebrate downtown Westmont. Board to consider motion approving the following requests from the Westmont Chamber of Commerce. Number one, approval to post a promotional banner at Burlington and Cass between May 3rd and 16th with the banner to be approved by the Economic Development Department and installed by the Public Works Department. And two, approval to have live entertainment at local businesses on Friday, May 14th, 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. and Saturday, May 15th, 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Vote on both of these together?
Take them together.
Motion to approve, Fleming.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Next item, ambulance billing. Board to consider approval of an ordinance to approve, approve one-year agreement with Andre Medical Billing Limited for ambulance billing and collection services.
Motion to approve, Seneca. Second, Emery.
Discussion, roll call.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Thank you, finance ordinance number 25.
We have the forest on this third day of May 2010, a finance ordinance in the amount of eight hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Motion to approve, Forsley.
Second. Scott.